Welcome to Transform Rockford's Forum for Candidates for the Rockford Public Schools Board of Education. My name is Leslie Cooper and I serve on the Transform Rockford Steering Committee. Nothing drives the long-term health of a region more than the performance of our schools and students. Our residents have said that for years, and we've heard them, that's why Transform Rockford is having this forum for the public to get to know the candidates to fill the seven board seats of the Rockford Public Schools Board of Education. School board members set academic policy, make budget decisions, and set the tone for the entire school district. Tonight will be a forum, not a debate. Prior to this evening, the candidates have provided responses to a series of questions. Those questions and responses are available in printed packets. Please request a copy from one of the ushers if you do not already have one. This evening, the candidates will be responding to another series of questions that will be timed and puts a premium on crisp answers so that we may hear from all the candidates. Please note that six of the attendees here are in contested races. Those are from sub-districts A, D, and F. The other attendees are in uncontested races. All will be on the ballot on the April 4th election. Before we get started, I want to thank a number of folks that are working to make this a successful evening. First, thank you to each of the candidates for working with us in advance to prepare for this evening. Your willingness to serve the public, to be here tonight, and to help us understand your views is greatly appreciated. Please note that Tiana McCall and Lisa Jackson were unable to attend, but both send their regrets. Thank you to Reverend Dr. K. Edward Copeland for moderating this evening's event and working to keep us all on time and on track. Thank you also to our ushers who are from RPS 205 and Rock Valley College, the Rockford Public Library for providing this fine facility and support, and those at Transform Rockford that had helped make this event a priority. Most of all, thank you to the members of our community. We appreciate those here tonight, those planning to vote, and those that are involved in their schools and the lives of our community's students, teachers, and administrators. You are the foundation of this larger effort to educate our children and prepare them for their future. We have five predetermined questions for the candidates. If time allows, we will include additional questions submitted online or tonight via the note cards. If you have a question and you would like to place it on a note card, please pass it to the end of the aisle and someone will be by to pick it up throughout the evening. For the candidates, your timekeeper is in the front row, right there, Mike. He will flash a yellow card with 30 seconds left, and he will flash a red card when time is up. We ask that you stop your response at that point. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Reverend Dr. K. Edward Copeland, our moderator this evening.
One last item of housekeeping. I'm asking the candidates as well as those in the audience if you could make sure your phone is on silent or off so that it would not be disruptive. We really don't want to hear your ringtone to your embarrassment and to the disruption of our summit. We're going to start off by having each one of the candidates to state your name and the district, sub-district that you hope to represent. We'll do that in short order and then we'll start asking the questions. After I ask the question, I'll give you the timeframe within which you have to ask that question. And again, we're asking you to pay attention to the handsome gentleman in the front. When he flashes the yellow card, you have 30 more seconds. When he flashes the red card, do not make me pull out my pastoral prerogatives and cut you off. So we'll start with the gentleman all the way to the end. We'll come around this way, state your name and the sub-district you hope to represent.
Juan Reyes, Sub-District F.
Good evening, Kim Haley, Sub-District A.
June Stanford, Sub-District G.
Good evening, Paul Carpenter, Sub-District E.
Jude McCullough, Sub-District D.
Nicole Bennett, also Sub-District E.
Grant Schubert, Sub-District B.
Denise Pearson, Sub-District A.
First question, we'll start this way with Ms. Pearson. And part of the reason I wanted you to state your name is so that we can adjust. I'm going to need all of you to adjust when you're answering the questions. Try to speak directly into the mic even if you have to pick the mic up so that everyone can hear you clearly. First question, starting this way, and you'll have 1 minute and 30 seconds to answer this question. The question is, "How would you characterize your current understanding of the school district's issues? And where will you turn for information to improve or maintain your understanding?" Once again, "How would you characterize your current understanding of the school district's issues? And where will you turn for information to improve or maintain your understanding?" You have 1 minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you. I understand the current school district issues to be achievement, which is issue with literacy, a shortage of teachers, and safety. It is important that we understand or we work collaboratively together to improve our academic achievement. Literacy is a chronic problem, which is the connector and the foundation of our students' education. When the issue with literacy is corrected, you will find an improvement in every other area of achievement. Where will I turn for information to improve or maintain my understanding? I always have an ear for community members and my constituents. I use the superintendent as a source of information. I also use the lead counsel for the school district for additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. And Mr. Schubert, as you get ready to speak, and everyone else, please make sure that you pull the mic to you. She used the mic in her throat, but we need everybody else to use the mic on the table.
So I'll echo, you know, I know Denise is spot on with a lot of the things she understands about the issues in our district. I also know our graduation rate is lagging behind the state. And in my personal experience, I came from, the reason I'm running for this position and interested in this is I know how important literacy is. I was working with 18- and 24-year-olds getting out of jail, prison, and juvenile justice, and a lot of these guys couldn't read and had those difficulties. So literacy is near and dear to my heart. I believe, along with Denise, that once you can, you know, get that piece of the puzzle, a lot of things will fall into place. So, you know, as far as who to turn to, I think, you know, the work I've done throughout the community, you know, some we used to call it the street level, the trench level, you've got to talk to everybody. And I think the administration's a powerful tool to understand things. But I think teachers and paras and everybody in these buildings needs to be listened to and needs to be understood where they were coming from, and I think that's a big deal. So I hope I'll be able to talk to everybody. I know that might be corny, but that's what I'm hoping.
Okay, so regarding current issues, so as both of the previous people have stated, literacy and rates, yes, but I think just off-track in general. So a lot of our children have experienced trauma, and I mean high levels of trauma, complex trauma, trauma that builds and builds and builds. They live in homes that are not safe. They live in homes where there's lots of other things that they might be more concerned about that are not their academics. So I think one of the large issues is getting support for those needs that they have so they can be able to learn. So I think areas to reach out to are teachers, staff, community, lots of different partnerships that I believe would be very beneficial for the district. When I worked in local middle schools, there were so many children that all you have to do is ask, and they will tell you exactly what they need. They can tell you right what is not correct. They can tell you right how to get there. So I think us as community members, as a hopeful board member, that is our responsibility to be able to address those needs. And so in order to do so, I think that we have to rely on all of the thousands of people that work in the buildings, and they are the experts of their classrooms, of their buildings. I also believe that it's really important to ask those specific people. So what one need at Eisenhower is, for example, is completely different than Lincoln. So making sure that we rely on those people who are already experts in their fields.
Well, the question is, "How would you characterize your current understanding?" So instead of some of the future ones focus on what your concerns are, so I'll characterize my understanding as intimate. I'm school board president now, have been on the board for 14 years, president for two years. I put in 30-some weeks, 40 hours on background work, meetings with people downtown, visiting schools, meeting with constituents. So I think I have a pretty good understanding of where the district is. I would continue those kind of interactions. Today, I was at Roosevelt. Yesterday, I was at Lincoln. Last week, I was at the RILC, at Fairview. So I totally agree with Nicole that we need to be talking to the people in the schools because every time I'm there, I find out something new that I can bring back to administration. We can have conversations about, in terms of making decisions, but giving, and giving suggestions. But, you know, at the end of the day, you have to listen and you have to communicate. So communication is most important.
Thank you. I would characterize my understanding of the school district's current issues as a parent first. I guess I have two children in the Rockford Public Schools, in high school. One's at Guilford and one's at East. And going through, as a parent, there's issues of a disconnect between school and parents a lot of times, in my opinion. And I think it's not for a lack of trying most of the time. It's for a difference in the way people are communicating. And so one of the problems, one of the issues I think that our district has is the difficulty, for many parents, there's a difficulty in engaging with the school, with the district, or with the administration of the school, with the teachers of the school, and navigating the processes for getting their students help when they need help. And that's something that I think that we need to address quickly. And it's one thing that's really holding back our achievement, in my opinion. I also think that, or I also have, so there's my experience as a parent. Also, I have a good relationship with a lot of teachers and other people in the district, and there's concerns that they have. So those are the places that I would look for for improving and maintaining my understanding. Reaching out to administration is good, but I think parents are a number-one source for understanding what issues are important to our district. So, thank you.
Well, I would say that as a current board member, I am knee-deep in the school district's issues on a weekly basis and continue to be involved and put in the work preparing for each week's meeting with any specific issues that come aboard. There are lots of issues facing our district. And I hope that our new board that is seated in April, all are going to be on the same page so that we can serve our students well. And where do I turn for information? Well, I like to think that I'm an active listener, not only do parents and administration, but also the experts in the field, reading what I can on subjects that come up that are pertinent to our district. And I would continue to do that going forward. Thank you.
I would characterize my understanding of the school district's issues as a sitting board member being appointed in December. I am learning a whole lot more about how the district works. The current issues that we face currently are low graduation rates and low literacy and numeracy skills. You know, as far as other issues that face the district, I'm learning more and more. And although it's easy to bash the districts, I think the district, I think that we are making, putting different policies in place and programs in place to address the issues that we face. Currently, you know, as far as getting information, I get my information from the administration. I get it from the superintendent. I get it from reading. I get it from, you know, working with the community members and understanding what their needs are as far as parents are concerned and as far as working with employers and community partners. So you want to get that information because these are the community members that you really want to work with to, you know, find out their needs so that we are preparing our students for the needs in their community as far as employment is concerned. So, you know, we have to stay connected, have parent involvement, and also listen to the teachers in our building so that we are aware of what's going on and in providing what they are needing.
Well, I'm just going to say it like it is. Our issues are really bad right now. If we have, right now, our report card states that we have 7% of minorities that are on third-grade reading level, that's not good. You know, some of these board members I do agree with, even the sitting board members. Where I'm going to get my information is going to be from the parents in the community. The parents are the ones that know their children. I'm sorry to say I wouldn't get anything from this administration. It's been, it's been on a decline since the last 10 years. Nothing against anybody here who's sitting on the board. I'm just saying that we need, as a community, understand our children more and work with them. Recently, I just went to one of the schools and I sat there with a couple of teachers and students. And it wasn't money that they wanted, it was more room. They wanted more teachers to be more engaged. They wanted parents to be more engaged. And that's what we need to do as far as communication. We need to communicate with our parents. If our parents are not communicating, then our child is left in the middle. And if our teachers aren't doing anything, then our parents aren't doing anything. So we've got to work all collaboratively together. I don't know how we're going to do it. If I do get on the board after April 4th, I'd be more than happy to look at everything. Look at the line items, see where we can take some money and use it for more resources for our children. And if we have parents that are illiterate, maybe we can help them so they can understand what's going on with this district. There's a lot we can do right now. There's a lot of issues, and we could go through every issues and we can bash everything there. But why do that? We just need to work as one. You know, as Mr. Carpenter was saying, he's a parent. Yeah, there's a huge disconnect between parents and the administration.
Time. Second question, we'll come back around to Ms. Pearson. What are your areas of concern regarding student achievement in the district? And do you have specific suggestions for improvement? You'll have 2 minutes and 30 seconds, each of you, to answer this question. Once again, what are the areas of concern regarding student achievement in the district? Pardon me, what are your areas of concern regarding student achievement in the district? And do you have specific suggestions for improvement? Ms. Pearson.
Thank you. So as I forestated, literacy is a major problem. And I will continue to hone in on the literacy issue because, again, it is the foundation of our students' learning. So in my experience of the past two years that I've served on the board, it is, first of all, Sub-District A is a unique sub-district in that it has a very high rate of poverty. So there is many societal issues that our students deal with. So in order to be effective in achievement, we have to meet the social-emotional piece of their learning, and that is absolutely vital. We have to take a look at our curriculum, identify our students' learning style, and be proactive in understanding the students that you teach. Teachers are vital, and I have so much appreciation for our teachers. It is very important that board members show up, not just during election time, but that should be a commitment that we make to have that connection with our teachers and our principals throughout the year. In order to improve, again, we must come together as a community. RPS 205 do not have all the answers. They can't do it alone, or they would have done it by now. It is definitely going to take a community effort, and it is not enough for community members to sit on the sideline and tell the school board what they should be doing. We are in this together because the outcome of our students will ultimately affect the entire community. So we have to show up, and to our parents, we have to show up for our students. And I understand that we are faced with many situations, but that's where community engagement comes, knowing your neighbor. If you can't show up, find someone who can, and let's work this together for the greater good of our students. Thank you.
So I feel like, I'm looking at Denise's sheet over here, but, you know, literacy, to me, is a big deal. The graduation rates are things, you know, that concern me as a citizen. You know, as someone in this community who's worked in the schools and who's tried to build and scale things up. You know, and I think that goes to specific suggestions for improvement. You know, I know that there's great things happening in buildings all throughout this district. And I know there's partnerships, community partnerships, nonprofit partnerships that are positive, and they're getting, you know, actual, you know, measurable gains. And I think it's a really big deal that we sit down and be very intentional in the way we scale those things up. And I think what I see, and what I've seen, you know, doing the work I've done throughout my career in this community, is that things happen kind of in these little, on these little islands. I know silos was the really cool word for a while. But, but it happens, right? And there's, and there's 30 kids that are having this great experience, and we need to be able to scale it up, be intentional, be intelligent in the way, who we bring around the table, who we give dollars to, who we, you know, make sure get background check to come into our buildings and do good work. And I, so that's for me, you know, I think that's, in a broad 30,000-foot level, we need to scale up partnerships that are effective and that are efficient. And I know that's happening, but how can we, how can we make it consistent and cohesive across the district?
Thank you. Okay, so areas of concern. So as a social worker, I felt like before I entered into working in schools that I kind of had some idea of how schools operated and kind of needs of students. I had counseled in the community. And so I was not prepared for what I learned working in schools and just how hard some days are and how amazing some days can be. And so one of my areas of focus, and it is so, so important to me, is off-track specifically for middle school. And I don't want to categorize students as being rates, right, or being stats. But it is really important because that's where we start. So we look at data and we really figure out what a student needs, but looking at them as a whole child. So I think some areas of the district are lovely, and we're going to talk about that later on. But there are some areas where we're so stuck on this is their rate of this, this is their score on this, but we don't look at them as whole people. So we're not, we're not seeing different ways that they're interacting with different teachers. Who is their, who is their support person? How do we get more time with that person? And so I think that we need to support all people in our buildings. So there have been teachers who have worked in this district 30 or more years, right? And they have stayed and they care. And so how do we get that in lots of different buildings? And how do we instill that in our new teachers? Because we have new teachers coming in and they are very overwhelmed. We know the current state of our city, let alone our world. And so student achievement is definitely important, but there are so many things that go into it, not just handing a child a book or sitting with them for a little bit of extra time. We have to look at them as a whole person. One of the things that I'm really excited about is the district using Panorama, so a software to be able to look at students so we can see what their levels of achievement are or their levels where they're not maybe achieving, and we can be supports to them. So as Grant said, bringing in other community partners. So Move the Middle specifically is a United Way initiative, and it's in two local middle schools. And they look at the whole child. So they look at children that are not attending, which is a huge issue we know in our district. Children that might not be behaving in their class and might not be performing the way that they would like. And they really figure out the root issue because that's so essential, right? If a child is failing a course, is it because they don't understand the material? Is it because they're being bullied? Is it because they maybe don't vibe with that teacher? That is also a thing that could happen, right? So we really need to sit down with them and we really need to figure out kind of why they are not achieving and not just assume we have the answers, which is something that grown people tend to do often.
When I hear you, when I hear you talk about community involvement, somebody today asked me, "What ever happened to Share Fest?" Do you remember when this whole community was really engaged with our schools? They were in there painting and cleaning and sprucing them up. It was a great time, and we really have lost that connection. But the question is about areas of concern regarding student achievement. Clearly, literacy is a huge problem. Clearly, students can't learn if they're not engaged and they aren't socially-emotionally connected with the school. An interesting fact is that we do survey all our schools every year, and we find that the parents and the students love their school, but they think the whole rest of the district is crap. So they really feel an ownership in that building. And if we could get that to be pervasive throughout the district, it would help. One of the things that we know that students need is an adult mentor. And getting an adult mentor is part of our program that we're working on with some of our community partners where they come into the schools during lunchtime or after school and are trying and working to mentor. And some of them are moving the needle on achievement with those programs. Another problem, though, that we have with student achievement is our adult issues. We have all these problems with students, but we also have adult issues. We have teachers who have been teaching for so long and have a certain curriculum. And when the district has tried to bring in a change of curriculum, sometimes there's resistance. And sometimes, and it's not a resistance like we don't know better, but it's a top-down issue, I think. It's the fact that we didn't collaborate well enough with our teachers to get them engaged and believe in the curriculum that we're bringing in. So that's a problem. We certainly attempted to work on it with our administration, and we'll, you know, we'll continue to push on that. We're bringing in a new reading curriculum. We'll be voting on it this month. They've engaged teachers. They've engaged schools, principals, and now they're doing a short pilot. But one of the things you have to remember is a sense of urgency. We had a school board member who used to say that. You have to do things with a sense of urgency. You can't wait a year. That year, you have a group of students who have lost a year of their education. And so, and so we're going to move on that curriculum, and we're going to hopefully get our teachers all prepared so that they, they put it into place and we know it works.
I think that the biggest areas of concern for student achievement in the district, number one is the graduation rate. I think that other people have mentioned that. I think that's the number one, you know, that's the thing that we expect the schools to do is get our kids, when they're 17, 18-years-old, to graduate. And that is the biggest number-one thing that we should be looking at. The other student achievement issue, I think, is attendance, which was also mentioned, I guess. But that starts a lot younger than high school. It starts in elementary school. And I think that one of the issues with attendance that is kind of ignored is that attendance is not just the kid's not wanting to go to school or the parent's not wanting to take them to school. It's the inability of them to get, of parents to get their kids to school. The state law mention, or state law requires the district to provide transportation if you live more than a mile and a half away from the school. Well, that means that if you're less than a mile and a half away from the school, the district doesn't have to provide you transportation. So if you have a seven-year-old kid and you live a mile and a quarter away from your school, how are they getting there? The parent's going to take them, I guess, but does that mean, what's that going to do? The parents, are the parents working? The school district, or the school hours are not, you know, the same as a lot of people's work hours. And sending a seven-year-old a mile and a quarter across town is probably not going to be looked favorably by a lot of people. And that law was written, I'm an attorney, and I've been an assistant state attorney for a long time, worked in juvenile court, so I've worked on these issues for a long time. But that law was written, you know, in the 1940s when sending a kid a mile and a quarter across town probably wasn't that big of a problem. But now it is a problem, and it's something that needs addressed, and it's something that the district needs to work with the state to address, in my opinion. And so that's, that's a specific suggestion for improvement that I think that would improve achievement is making sure that kids, even if they're less than the state-mandated time, distance away from the school, have a way to get to school. I think that that's really holding us back. And I know that the United Way worked on that a few years ago with walking school buses, I think, if I recall. And I, I mean, that's kind of a, that's a solution, but that's not the way to solve that problem. So that's something that I think that we should look at and work with other agencies in the state on. And that's the number-one thing that I would be concerned about.
So we definitely have a problem with student achievement in our district. There is no question. And I believe it starts in the very beginning. The school district has a partnership with Alignment Rockford, who has turned their focus to early childhood education. That means birth to three, before the child ever sets foot in a school, using metrics provided by the EDI, information that they have received, and they're getting services out there to newborn, new parents, and kids before they ever hit school. I think that's very important. Once the kids are in school, we have issues with meeting certain metrics, like third-grade literacy, third-grade math. We have put into place in the district currently a system called Standards of Practice that have moved the needle a bit on these, on these elementary-grade issues. Hopefully, they will continue to move them in the right direction. Once you get to middle school, we have all other kind of issues. And we have a new metric that we're using called Middle School On Track that just, we just formulated in the last year or so. That's going to be a new metric that we're using, hopefully, to get our students already focused on graduation before they focused on graduation before they even get to high school. And then, once we get to high school, there are issues, of course, with kids that have all traumatic issues and social-emotional learning. And we are hopefully getting things in place to deal with those situations as well. And with our community partners, hopefully, those will just get stronger.
Some of the issues that I see are of concern with achievement in the district. Of course, as all we've all stated, it's student achievement. And we are focusing on third-level achievement, that they're on track. We're also focusing on middle school on track. And when they get to high school, we're focusing on that they're ready to graduate. But I think it comes way earlier than third grade. If students get to third grade and they're not prepared, they start to shut down. So my concern is that we weren't really focusing on early childhood education. But as June stated, we do have initiative in place with Alignment Rockford where that is a focus. So students are getting prepared to enter kindergarten with some level of reading or achievement ability so that they're successful as they enter third grade. We can't just wait until they get to third grade and then try to tackle the issue there. We need to really try to focus on that early. So that, of course, literacy and numeracy skills are a concern. The other concern is that when we're, as a community, and as we're working in collaborative relationships with our employers and our community partners, that the district is not putting out a product that is able to, that we're able to meet the needs of our employers and our community. So although we talk a lot about literacy, a lot of the jobs that are available today really focus on math, too. So we really need to kind of increase our numeracy skills so that students are prepared for jobs of the future. As far as specific suggestions to tackle those issues, first of all, to make sure they're on track as they're entering kindergarten, that they are prepared, and that we are getting our parents involved. That's another issue. That we do have a lack of parent involvement. We do have some really involved parents, but the more involved parents are, the more students are going to be involved. So we do need our parents in the schools. So that's one concern. I do want to have it addressed and make our parents welcome into the schools, as well as create partnerships where parents and students can get involved with the school district as well. So that's one of my suggestions, but also to
Time.
Build relationships with our colleges.
I'm not going to bore you with the concerns with the district. I mean, we've all said it right here, literacy, graduation rate. Do I have specific suggestions of improvement? Again, I'm not the type of person that says, "Hey, I'm going to do this. I want to get there first." As an employer, I want to get our children ready for the workforce. You know, when they're coming in here with t-shirts and sweatpants and saying, "I want a job," I'm thinking to myself, "Did you not get prepared? Did you not learn what going into an employer and getting a job for, or understanding what you're going in for that?" That's where I see the issue is, but how can we improve that? I don't know. I'm going to say, I'm going to try to base it on the parents, the community. I'm going to try to get with the workforces. I'm going to try to do my best to understand. Because I look at someone like myself. Has anyone ever heard the statement, "The soft bigotry of low expectations"? And if you've never heard that, I will be more than happy to explain that at the very end. But here's the thing. I grew up on the west side of Rockford. I grew up very poor. If we continue to say, "Well, that's okay. We got to do this. We got to do that, and we can help you this way," all we're doing is crippling those children and those parents, to be honest with you. Ms. Bennett stated earlier about trauma in the kids. Well, if our teachers don't know the trauma firsthand, how can they help them? I get teachers are very vital to our organization. That's a thankless job. As a police officer, we had thankless jobs. But we do it because we have passion for it. I get that. But how do we deal with that trauma? How do we connect with that child to help that kid or that parent? Because it all trickles down. Again, I am a walking product of that, but I told myself I wasn't going to be in that situation. I'm 51 years old now, three businesses later, and I want to help children. Like I said, I love going and talking to these kids and understanding what they really, really want. They want more engagement. They want to be more involved, but they just don't see it. They don't see the teachers, and not all of them, most of them are engaging with them. They just say, "Here, here's a computer." I stood in the same classroom the other day for 30 minutes, and they were all on their laptop. Not one person engaged with the teacher. That's a problem for me. As a parent, that'd be a problem. All right? Now, I have five children that all graduated. I have four grandchildren right now, three that are attending, and I'm very
Time. So we're going to start with you, Mr. Reyes, this time, and go back around this way. So the question this time is, what are the areas revolving around student achievement that you think Rockford Public Schools get right? We're going to take one minute and 30 seconds to answer that question. Again, the question is, what are the areas revolving around student achievement that you think the Rockford Public Schools get right? Start with Mr. Reyes, and then come back to
Thank you, sir. You know, I can't, as a parent, I can't really, looking at a report card, I just can't see anything that we're doing anything right for our children. I'm sorry. I'm going to be honest and blunt. You know, I've done my best. I've looked at everything. I've gone through different school districts. Some of these, the second question was specific suggestions for improvement. Why have we modeled a school district from another neighboring county or city? And say, "Hey, they have the same, how's their working and we're not?" Instead of getting all these matrix and all these people coming in and giving us certain ways how to teach, let's get involvement with other communities. Let's see what they're doing right and what we're doing wrong, or vice versa. That's how I see it. It's like businesses. You talk to one another. You try to figure out, "Hey, this is what we do. This is how we do it. This is how you make your business better. This is what I want to do with our school district. How can we make it better?" We can read all day. We can get matrix all day. But I'd rather grab another community that's doing the great things and modeling that community and go, "Let's try to work that out and go from there." Thank you.
A couple of the areas, I think, where the district gets it right in regards to student achievement is that the district is placing resources where they need to be. So we are having equitable spreading, putting dollars where they are most needed. So I think the district is getting that right. I think they're also getting right where we are allowing the principals and the administrations of the buildings to address the needs of the students, their individual and specific needs of the students in their school. So the district does allow that. The other thing is there's the initiative on teacher recruitment. I think there is a lack of diversity among our teachers, and we need teachers in our schools that look like our students so that the students have something to look up to and to aspire to. So we need that. And so the district does have a few initiatives in place where they are recruiting from HBCUs, where we are hoping to get teachers of colors and staff of color in our schools. But also to increase staffing itself among the teachers, because there is a lack of staffing in our schools. So we want to make sure that all of our staff and our teachers are supported. So the district is actually working toward making those things happen.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I would have to say that I disagree with Mr. Reyes. I think there are so many amazing things going on in our schools on a daily basis. We have incredible students. We have incredible things happening all over our district. A perfect example of that would be my son, who is in the audience. My son struggled with math. So Auburn High School put the resources around him and helped him get through his math courses that he needed to graduate last year. That's a perfect example. Another example that I think where we're getting it right would be the STEAM Academy at Haskell Elementary School. That school has shown the biggest increase in student achievement across the district for the last several years. I would love to see us replicate that model, learn from them, and put it in place in other schools where their achievement is not so high. It's not all doom and gloom. We have incredible students that are really doing incredible things.
Thank you. I think that areas revolving around student achievement that the schools get right, there's hundreds of great, dedicated teachers that want students to achieve, that work hard to get students to achieve, that communicate with parents on a regular basis. So that's one thing that I think the schools are getting right. Another thing, the STEAM Academy that June just mentioned reminded me of the high school academies that I think are successful, especially for kids who know where they want to go, what they want to do after school, that those academies help those students find, or guide them to what they want to do, whether it's teaching or in the trades, or college, or whatever they want to do. I think that, I also think that, you know, I think communication's a big issue, but I think that the district does have a lot of ways, too, that they do communicate with parents. And I think that that could be improved sometimes, but I think that they are trying and do take a lot of effort and initiatives to try to communicate. I think there's still a disconnect, but it's not, like I said, for lack of trying. So those are the things that I think that the district is doing well.
June, thank you for your positivity, because I don't have enough room on this paper for all the things that are happening in this district that are actually good and we're showing results. Our teachers are amazing. They are there every day for our students. We have a program where we'll grow our own teachers. We'll take Paris nutritionists, secretaries, and we'll pay for them to get an education, to get a teaching degree at Northern Illinois University. We have programs where we're going to advance our teachers with master's degrees in content areas so that they can teach dual-credit classes. Somebody, I think you talked about our equity initiative. We work very hard to make sure that schools that have the poorest students have additional money. It comes from the state. It's evidence-based funding. We have $27,000 that we shared between the schools. Some schools are spending $20,000 per pupil. Some schools are spending $12,000 per pupil. STEAM is one place we're spending $20,000, and we're seeing a 30% increase in their reading scores. We just did the midterm tests, which are going to be reflective of what's happening when we do the state test. We have the site-based funding. Our preschools are amazing. They're gold star. They get state accolades. You talked about the academies. We have a framework. We no longer just have the downtown people looking at the school saying, "Here's what you're doing wrong." We have the schools looking back at downtown and grading them on what they're not receiving so that they can do better because they're getting what they need to teach students.
Okay, so I also agree that there are several things. I'm an RPS student myself, previous, not current. And so I'm sure no one's confused. And so there are several great things that are happening. And so I think also the different ways that we're trying to get students to engage, whether that's sports, whether that's clubs. When I was at Spring Creek, they were talking about a robotics club, like how cool, Lego Club, book club, all of these different things that I wish were available when I was going to school. So not just sports, but ways that they could be engaged, ways that they can feel that they belong. All of those things we know feed into achievement. The Student Ambassador Program that they have, so students be able to provide tours of their building, provide history on their buildings, being able to feel connected, show off their schools, and they get to dress up. That's also very exciting. Student council. I also think PTOs. So Sub-District D, we were very fortunate that there are lots of active PTOs, and I mean very active PTOs, that some of them do something every single day to work towards their PTO. So that is something that is amazing, that only benefits, obviously, students and the people in the buildings. I also think the level of investment that we have in teachers. Some teachers have, it's like 85% to 90% retention rate in different buildings of teachers that teach in that building and want to stay. And last, I think hiring an executive director of diversity, equity, inclusion. When I first started my work at RPS, there wasn't someone in that role. Dr. Reed is amazing. I think the lens that the district has to run everything by the DEI lens and by his office, so all choices run through him, I think that is essential, and I'm so excited about that.
Thank you.
So I can just speak real briefly. I have a personal experience at Fairview. Our preschools are just amazing. I've been in Byer, and I think, a lot of people don't know the great work that happens inside those hallways, the amazing things they do. I know they prepared my little people to just be active and great little learners, and you get to go in and listen to songs and see these individuals grow. Standing in a line at Fairview, watching a kid from the first day to the last day, go from inverted to outward, it's a huge deal, and it's something that is powerful, and I think the district has done amazing. I've been lucky enough to go into a few different high schools to do mock interviews for workforce development, and those are really positive interactions to tell these young people that the possibilities that wait for them, the employers that are begging for them, maybe even in sweatpants, my guy, they might take them in. So, and I think, for me, to tell a young person the possibilities are out for them, and the district has been very intentional in putting employers in place and community colleges and technical people in those buildings to tell young people the world that they might not know. And that's been a very positive thing and a district-led initiative. So the two positive things, and there's many, many more going on in the building.
Thank you. So what I can say that the district is doing right is identifying the need for equity in our schools and making our schools, the schools that need it, that the funding is there. So identifying problems is a good thing that the district is doing, and we must continue the work. It was forementioned, early childhood education. Early childhood education is where it all began. And that is an absolute must. I am reminded of a little girl who was initially diagnosed with autism. And her mother enrolled her in the early childhood program, and she had a teacher, and someone came to her home. And there's not many community members that believe in that, but that little girl is thriving, and she's speaking full sentences. I think that it is really important to make sure that the foundation is stable. And so I can't stress enough on early childhood education. Knowing that the different pathways to become a teacher, we are doing that right, not saying that there's not room for improvement or more effort, but those are some things that the district is doing right.
Back to Mr. Reyes. How do you intend to work with others? How will you deal with sensitive issues, policy disagreements, and personal differences? Everyone is going to have one minute and 30 seconds for this question. And again, how do you intend to work with others? How will you deal with sensitive issues, policy disagreements, and personal differences?
Well, we'll start off with the first one. How am I going to intend to work with others? Believe it or not, I'm still a nice guy. I'm open. I listen. I don't bring in anything personal, because if the last couple of boards that I've been on, like the Better Business Advisory Board, if I thought to myself, "I'm going to bring my personal views to this," we wouldn't be having any kind of functions. So we all collaboratively just get together. I know Ms., I think it was Ms. Stanford, that said, "We all have to be on the same page." A good board would not be on the same page, to be honest with you. A good board will have some disagreements and have views and ideas from different angles. That's what I see as a good board. Because if everybody's on the same page, it might not be getting done. Everybody's going to agree with one another. So I intend to listen, get community response, get engaged with the community. Like I said, as far as policy disagreements, I don't see me disagreeing with policies. If it's good for the parents, the teachers, if it's under our governance, is it godly? Is it legal? You know, if it falls under all that, I'm good with it. There's not a policy out there that I'm going to disagree, because if it's doing good for the children and the teachers and the staff and administration, I'm okay with it. Even if I disagree with it, I'm still good with it. So I wouldn't say that I have any personal differences. I wouldn't say that I would have any issues on my personal level. Thank you.
So basically, how I intend to work with others is basically just to have mutual respect, to empathize with their points of views, their experiences, and understand that when we have our differing opinions, we have different experiences that have formed those opinions. So having empathy and trust in one another, but also having a lot of respect. So it starts there. So it starts there. Even when you disagree with someone, they're still people and, and, you know, we can hate each other all day, but that's because we don't talk to one another. The minute you first talk, you get to know a person, you get to like them a little bit more. So you, you get, you talk to one another and you collaborate and you, you work toward a common goal. So you identify that goal and you work toward that specific goal. To deal with sensitive issues, basically, you know, you want to educate yourself on those, those particular issues. You want to read, you want to, you know, get the policy and understand the issue, the issues at hand. You don't want to just lead from personal experience. You want to, again, listen to other people's experience and, and understand where they come from and understand why are, why they disagree with specific policies and try to come to some type of mutual understanding so that you can have, not necessarily a consensus, but more of a collaborative agreement.
Thank you.
So I'd like to come to the table knowing that I don't have all the answers. I'm not an expert in the field of education. I am an accountant by trade and have done a lot of learning in the last three years. There's so much to learn and enjoy doing that on a weekly basis. I'd like to also come to the table with an open mind. Of course, I have my own opinions on issues, but I have an open mind to listen to other people's opinions and their justifications for their opinions. And it might just sway me, who knows? But I think that's how a group collaborates and works together, by having an open mind, having respect for one another and then finally coming to a mutual decision.
Thank you. I think the way I would work with others is the way I think most of us work with others whenever we're working with people in our, in our lives day to day is you listen to people, other people's opinions or from their, listen to their perspectives and knowing that communication it takes, is a two-way street. You have to talk and listen and hope and assume that the person you're communicating with is listening to you and you're listening to them. And one of you might be right, one of you might be wrong, you might both be partially right, but you have to, you know, work those differences out. And I think that's, I don't think that that's a big secret on how we deal with issues every day and that's the way I would deal with issues on the board. As far as policy disagreements go, I, I agree that there's going to be policy, there's going to be disagreements on policy. I think that most people, most of, most people who want to serve on the school board probably have a similar goal, but the way to get to that goal, there might be disagreements on. And so, I think that that's the thing that we need to keep in mind is that we're all looking forward to getting to that same finish line, whether we're taking a different, whether, although we might be taking different routes there. And I think we need to listen to those and give respect to those people that have different ideas. Thank you.
Y'all know we're starting an IB program in the fall on this northwest quadrant. I'm, keep thinking of all these great things. We have barber, two-way language immersion. We have these kids who are totally fluent in Spanish and they're taking CLAP tests as eighth graders. So, all right, so let me go on to how do you intend to work with others? I always like to meet with all the board members, have personal conversations, either by phone, preferably in person. Communication is, again, I know I said that earlier, but it's really important. You can ask these board members, if you don't have enough information and background, you don't know the questions to ask half the time. And so, having had so much time on the board and having that background, I think it helps to foster relationships because I try to share that information when I know something that somebody else doesn't because I've had the experience or the history of having lived through it. So shared information is just so important. Oh, by the way, somebody talked about robotics tomorrow at Rockford University. Our high schoolers are doing balloon bots. It's a robotic competition, 10:00 AM. What else are we doing? Sensitive issues, you know, we have to maintain our confidentiality, policy disagreements, those are on the floor. Policy is done publicly. We don't do that behind closed doors. We vote on that. And personal differences, well, you get together for a superintendent evaluation and you forget to bring food for the staff, for the whole group. And then we really bonded, right? Drinking olive juice. So, there, it is important for us to bond and having our retreats helps us do that.
So I'm a social worker by trade, so we are master problem solvers. So intend to work, how do I intend to work with others? That is my actual profession. So, I think that my campaign currently, since I announced in October, is a perfect example of how to work with others. I have so many endorsements from so many different walks of life and I have been able to receive those because of listening and meeting with people from various professions. I have endorsements from the Rockford Chamber of Commerce, the Teachers Union, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, nutritionists, every labor and union, and I'm going to say every because there's so many and I don't want to be disrespectful to forget anybody's. And so if you think about all of those different people who have sensitive issues, policy disagreements, personal differences, different ways that they are vested in Rockford Public Schools, and they believe that I have the ability to be able to work through those issues, to work with the other six people who will be elected, to take that responsibility very serious. Sub District D means that I am the one that represents those voices and those interests and so that's my responsibility to advocate for that and to be able to understand that everybody else on the board would be doing the exact same thing. So being respectful, listening and also advocating because there is a space to listen, but also make sure your voice is heard. When I've met with parents and I've met with voters, that is my promise to them, that I will never be silent in matters that matter. And that is a responsibility of a board member, that is the oath that you take and that's the responsibility that we are all signing up to hopefully be able to do.
So I have, I have to be honest, this isn't the first time someone's asked me this question and it kind of makes you wonder what I got myself into. So, I mean, I think for me, you know, we're all professionals, we've worked in different environments with different people, with, with different opinions. I view this, obviously, this is a type of work, you know, this is community work and I, and I, and I don't see it being any different. So just making sure we remain professional. You know, personal opinions are important, but I don't think they should be, get to a place where there's a conflict. You know, I've, I've gotten along with every coworker I've ever had, I would look at this as, as a type of coworker. Well, maybe, let me, I have to think about that, but, you know, maybe they didn't know it, so that was good. But, you know, so for me, I think, you know, it's the gig is, is to make sure that we're being professionals and we're moving towards a goal and, and just, yeah, remaining grown adults. So that's, that's my plan.
So it is important, first of all, that we respect each other. In order to get anything accomplished, no one board member, as it was forestated, have all the answers. But it's important that we come to the table and address issues, whether we want to deal with it or not, that the issues face us every day. But respect is absolutely vital because you don't want to be in a situation where things can escalate and get out of hand. So you always want to maintain professionalism. And sometimes you're just going to have to simply agree to disagree. And I've learned that that method works. I can express my concerns, confront issues, and I can't say that the temperature don't rise at the table, that wouldn't be true. But you have to know that at the end of the day, we have to keep the interest of our student, of our students at the forefront. And so the, the respect of each other and having to sometimes agree to disagree and maintaining your commitment of advocacy despite of one's opinion.
And our fifth question here, we'll start with Ms. Pearson and go around this way. Could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not? Each of you will get one minute and 30 seconds for this question. Again, could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
So that depends on what the vote is. So, and I say that because sometimes I've had to stand alone in a vote and I realize that that would, there would be times that that would have to happen. When I initially interviewed, I was appointed before I was elected and I knew that I wouldn't always agree. I was, I'm not a yes person and there was times that we would have to agree to disagree. So depending on the, the matter. For an example, I did not vote in support of terminating non-tenured teachers. And the reason I did not support that is because one year is not enough, given the circumstances that our teachers are faced with every day, to determine if they're going to be a successful teacher or not. So I could not support that. I had to stand alone. I'm sorry.
You're good. I mean, I think, you know, obviously I don't have the experience Denise has and, and I imagine the emotion is, is raw in some of those situations. I think part of the task at hand as, as this board is, you know, there's seven of us that are going to vote and you might not always agree with every vote. And I think at some point you have to support the individuals. Obviously, if there's something you truly believe in and are passionate about, you know, that's when your morals or your values may, may conflict with that. I think publicly we have to support each other. If there's something going on that isn't above board, obviously that, that shouldn't take place. But if we're, if we're following the guidelines and everybody's, you know, expressed their opinion and, and you're the outlier, I think you have to support the board in that decision.
Before running for school board, I was on, on the operating board of Alignment Rockford for a little over two years. And so Alignment Rockford is made up of lots of different people, people from social services, businesses, Rockford Public Schools, religious organizations, heads of lots of different agencies in town. And there are lots of times people do not agree on ways that things can be handled, right? But I think supporting a decision or not is if it's tying back to kind of our mission, right? Everybody might have a different vision or a different way to approach it and I agree with what everybody has said. I would not ever say that I am not a fiery, passionate person. So, supporting something that if others are believing in, you'd have to take the time to listen and kind of really understand that. But supporting decisions that you don't always agree with is life and that's something that sometimes we do have to do. But I think being able to figure out a way to collaboratively work together and really understand people, I think somebody brought it up earlier, understanding that we are all doing this because we care and somebody's making choices because that's hopefully the reason as well.
In my last couple of years as board president, I've had to work to bring the board to consensus in closed session. You know, everything open, everybody can speak their piece, but quite often we have to talk about, and, and it's true that we all don't come to the same table with the same backgrounds and the same thought about how we want to vote on an issue. But once we get out on that board floor and a vote is taken, it is the responsibility of all the board members to own that vote, whether or not you supported it. That is being a board member and that is part of the oath that we take when we become board members. So, yes, I would definitely support a decision I did not vote in favor of because that is my job as a board member. And I don't just represent this Sub District D, I represent the entire school district. And so when I, when there's a decision and it's made and it's in favor and perhaps it's not in favor of something that, somewhere in my sub-district, it doesn't matter. I am a board member and I will support the decision of the board because we are, we speak as one.
I think there's times that you don't have to support the decision a board makes. If you voted against it, if the board, if other people on the board decided something that didn't make any sense, that wasn't in furtherance of the goals that we all were in favor of, that was contrary to legal advice to, there's a lot of reasons, things that a board could decide that you don't need to support if you vote against it, you don't need to come out and say, oh, I'm going to support that even though it was a bad idea. If the board voted to hold meetings at 3:00 in the morning on Wednesday nights, if the board voted for that and I voted against it, I'm not going to support that just because the board voted for it. So, you have to support, you should support decisions that might, that are in furtherance of a common goal, even if it's a different strategy than you would have taken, then, you know, if we're all working together towards that goal and they, and the board decided on a different strategy than what I thought was a good strategy, that's fine, I support that 100%. We want to reach, work towards that goal, we're all in favor of that goal and we support that 100%. But I'm not just going to say blanket statement, I'm going to support every decision that the board votes in favor of just because the board voted in favor of it. Hopefully, we can come to consensus, but until that vote happens, I don't think you can guarantee that you're always going to support whatever vote the board makes.
Okay, so I, I'm of the firm belief that the way that a board works is that we hash it out, everyone gives their opinion and we vote. And when the vote is cast, it's our duty as a board member to support that vote. If I have to come to a meeting at 3:00 AM on a Wednesday night because everyone else wants to, I'll come to the meeting at 3:00 AM on a Wednesday night. That's how a board works. That's not to say that I do not voice my opinion because I do and it matters. And it doesn't mean that every decision that's made by the board is what I agree with, but I will support it because it was made by the board. That's how it works.
For the most part, I think I can support a decision that I didn't vote in favor of as long that I, as long as I feel that I have been able to voice my opinion and I've been heard, I think I could usually get behind anything if it's in support of our students and our community. I don't know that I can support anything that causes harm to anyone. So I, you know, I, I do have my own personal feelings and backgrounds on certain issues, but as a board, we, we, you know, once a vote is made, not everybody, you know, always agrees on everything, but we do have to get behind that vote and make the best of the situation for all, for our students and our community and everyone who's involved. So for the most part, I, I will get behind a, a vote that the board has made.
Being on several boards, I've had the privilege of not everybody voting for, with me, so I understand that. If I do get elected to the school board, I will support any decision as long as it's good for the children, parents and teachers. As long as that's there, I would support anything, even if I didn't agree with it. What I wouldn't agree with if we made a decision, if it wasn't godly, ethical or constitutional, I would have a problem with that. So as far as agreeing or to disagree, I'm an open book, I can give my opinion, I might not like it, but this is a full board here that I will support, again, as long as it's supporting children, parents and teachers.
I want to thank all of the candidates because you have been very timely and because of that, we have time for two extra questions that have been submitted by the public. So this first question, I'm going to try to ask you to stick to one minute and 30 seconds and then the second question, which is a little bit broader, will give you two minutes and 30 seconds. So this first question, I'm going to ask again, one minute and 30 seconds. We'll start back over here and go all the way around. First question is this, let's go with this one. What are the, we have some great questions and they asked me to pick two out of the three. I can't go wrong, but the other questions, perhaps you'll have another opportunity to answer them somewhere else. First question is this, what are the challenges with RPS 205 to recruit, retain, recruit and retain both teachers and key administrators that will impact change in our community? Again, what are the challenges with RPS 205 to recruit and retain both teachers and key administrators that will impact positive change in the community? We'll start with Ms. Pearson. Let me read it one more time. You get one minute, 30 seconds on this question and remember the last question, you'll have a little more time. Question is, what are the challenges with RPS 205 to recruit and retain both teachers and key administrators that will impact positive change in the community?
Thank you. So, recruiting and retention is another challenge, no doubt. So, it is not a secret that it is So it is not a secret that it is a global issue of a teacher shortage. So recruiting teachers, first of all, that the beginning or starting salary for a teacher is insulting. And we must make sure that our teachers are well-paid for the job that we expect them to do. So in addition to the shortage, we could put a greater effort in collaborating with universities that have majors in education and making the sacrifice of making a financial commitment to secure our teachers, our key administrators. Sometimes there is an issue with the workload, trust, the staffing and communication. And I don't think that we do enough for recruiting and retaining. We have to invest in our own.
Thank you.
So I think it's important to say that I don't think recruiting and retaining talent right now is just an RPS issue. I mean, and I think it's an issue in a lot of different fields. I think it's really important to understand how compensation can attract new talent, but then it's also really important to understand how culture can retain it. So I think those are the things that we have to work on as a district to make sure that our compensation levels are at a place where people want to work here. But getting them in the door is just the first step. I work with a lot of employers who come to me and they say, man, we're paying a lot of money, but everybody's leaving. You got to look inward. So I think, you know, that's a thing that I think we can focus on as a board, as a district, as an administration. But I don't want it to just say like, RPS is the only one having trouble because I think, you know, I know hospitals having trouble staffing, schools are having trouble. So I think, you know, just making sure we're, you know, operating with best practices and moving, you know, with intention.
Okay, so from my conversations, I've talked to people who are current employees of the district, so I'm going to focus more on retaining because that's the conversations I've had, that's things I've worked, spaces I've worked in, and so that's what I'm going to focus on. So from conversations with people who work in buildings, one phrase that a teacher told me was caring doesn't pay my bills. So teachers want to be here, they want to help, but how, right? So teachers feel they're not treated as experts in their own classroom. They feel decisions are handed down from administration to them and they're the ones that are responsible for it. They feel they have too many responsibilities. They feel they're not listened to. They are surveyed, but they feel no changes happen. So year by year, surveys are administered and they're not seeing any changes. So in terms of retention, there are teachers that are retained, but besides all of that, that is an inward thing that they have chosen to do, that might not be something that the district has specifically addressed. I think one of the really cool recruiting programs is the mentoring. So for new teachers to be able to work with veteran teachers, to be able to say, these are shortcuts, these are things that are easy. When I worked in the school during the pandemic and teachers were learning how to teach on Zoom in addition to in the classroom, the amount of camaraderie that happened from teachers being able to assist was amazing. So I think there are challenges, but there are things that we would be able to do to help. And I also think for administration, it's the workload, it's the really intense situation. So for an administrator, could you imagine managing 400 children and any discipline, any calls home, any of the different things that come with that many children? It's overwhelming.
It's true that many of our teachers or our administrators feel like it was an easier job being a teacher for the amount of pay that they're getting. But what we are trying to do is for administrators is grow our own. We want to take our teachers who are interested in being administrators because they've been with the teachers in their building, they go through the NIU principal program and they can actually, the district again, pays to develop the talent so that we can fill some of the administrative roles that we have. As far as bringing in more teachers, we're trying to do some programs, we have an aspiring teacher program where student teachers come into the district and we actually pay them to student teach and they stay for a year. We pay them instead of just one semester. And then we offer them housing incentive. We'll give them 10% of the cost of a home to try to keep them here. It's a community issue, as you said, you know, people look at crime, we can't get people from the South because of the weather. There's a lot of reasons people don't come here. But I do believe the collaboration piece with retaining teachers is important. It's not enough to do a survey. I find that what retains teachers is if they get in a building and they have a really good leader or a good principal, it's like a family and they want to do all they can, not just for the students, but for their peers who are in that building. And so having good leaders is an important part of that retention process.
I agree with, I think what everybody has said, that it's hard to get teachers and administrators at this time for everyone. I think that one of the biggest problems that teachers have as far as, one of the problems the district has with teacher retention is that in addition to being fairly compensated, teachers also need to be respected and heard and respected as the professionals that they are. The teachers know what the students need better than anyone else. And when they bring their concerns to administration, to the principals or whoever they need to bring those concerns to, they need to be respected and heard and not told, not, whatever concern, whatever issues that are being brought, the teachers need to be heard for those issues because a lot of times they, they're not able to bring the problems directly to their principals from conversations that I've had. So I think that, and that's, I think that goes to leadership. That might be just a, you know, anecdotal thing for certain buildings, but I think that a lot of times that the teachers have a lot of concerns and problems that are not being met, even when they're being brought to their administration. So I don't have all the answers for retaining administrators or teachers, but I think those are the concerns, some concerns for teacher retention that I'm aware of.
So I think that attracting and retaining quality employees is like the million dollar question these days. It's rampant through every industry, not just education. One thing that I would like to see us do a better job of is telling our own students that they could be teachers. I think a lot of our kids, it never dawns on them that, oh, I could be a teacher. And, you know, if that was something that was fostered in our, in our own schools, we could grow our own more than we are currently doing. There are programs in place to help those students with their post-secondary education like Rockford Promise. So we would, we need community members who are invested in our community to be our teachers. And what better place than our own students to begin?
One of the challenges, I think, is compensation. We do, I think we need to pay our teachers well to not only recruit new teachers in the district, but also to retain the teachers we have here. Back to the question of retention, I think we need to listen to our teachers. They are the experts. We have all, we can have ideas, but we are not in the classroom working with the students. So we don't, you know, we need to listen to our teachers in order to retain them. As far as, you know, not only do we need to be concerned about attracting teachers, but we need, as a community, we would, we need to improve as a community to attract teachers to our community. And I think as one of the goals of Transform Rockford, you know, that's, that's one of the main things they do is to improve the community, to attract new employers, to attract people who to want to move here. And that's kind of one of the things that, you know, as a school district, we need to be a great school district to attract new students and, or new teachers. And I think we're working toward that as, with the programs that we're putting in place. And I think we just need to work on the compensation packages.
How to retain teachers? Well, I would pay a teacher a million dollars if it was there. I really would. Unfortunately, our report cards, like a businessman, I'm going to look at my profit and loss. We got to do things better and it's not the teacher's fault. I've talked to teachers, it's empowerment. We got to give the empowerment back to those teachers. I agree with Ms. Bennett, I agree with Ms. Haley here. Yes, the teachers are the experts, but they're not the only persons there. Their parents are there also. We got to communicate with them. They got to be involved. If we don't involve the parents, it's a losing battle. But the disciplinary problem also in the schools is another huge issue. And we're spending almost $4 million in private security and police for those issues and I feel that the money is just going out the door. How can we fix that problem so that teachers can say, hey, we have a good school, we have no disciplinary problems, we're going to have some, I get that. But the other thing that we got to look at too is not only on our level here, we got to look at the state level. Most teachers that are coming from different areas are going to say, wow, those taxes are high. I mean, it's, we're down here and the state's up here. So we got to work together on that to get down these taxes and attract more people and attract better teachers from different areas. Yeah, the weather sucks out here sometimes, but, you know, I know people from down south would love to come up here. Some people do love the cold weather and they like the different seasons. I don't have a definite answer to how to attract people. I will do my best, I'm elected on April 4th, but right now, I don't see that.
All right. So this is the last question and because, again, you've been so respectful as it relates to time, this question, you get two minutes and 30 seconds and it's broad enough that you can make your final statement. And the question is this, and I'll start with Mr. Reyes and come back around this way. Question is, what is your vision for education in this community? Again, you'll have two minutes and 30 seconds. The question is, what is your vision for education in this community? Mr. Reyes?
Robert Kulp, and you're saying if I had a Walgreens world right now?
Say it again.
If it was the Walgreens world right now, what would be my expectation of education?
Well, no, what is your vision for education in this community?
I'm kidding. My vision is to see our report card at a, I know it's not going to be perfect, at least at a 75 to 80%. I really, that's my vision to see. I want my vision to be more vocational, more hands-on, to get these kids ready for the workforce. You know, I knew back when I was in high school at shop class, when they said, hey, put that small engine together and I turned it into a birdhouse, I knew I was going to be a mechanic. Or when I went to the shop class and I turned it into a birdhouse it was supposed to be and I turned it into a small car, I knew, again, I was going to be a carpenter. Those kind of things there taught me to say, what do I want to do? That's the vision I want to see for these children. I want them to understand what they're going to, ideals, like the student teaching. Are they prepared for that? Is that what they want to go? I want to see children accelerating, knowing that they're getting out of school, knowing what they want to do. Now, does everybody know? No. I didn't know what I wanted to do from right out of high school. I joined the military. It was a good foundation for me. I didn't have a father. That was kind of my father figure. It taught me what I needed to do today, never give up. And that's what I want to teach our children right now, is not to give up. I know it looks groom, I know the world looks, you know, kind of complicated right now, but I think if we all got together and stopped polarizing each other and picking sides and doing this and that, that we all come as a community, I think our children. And in the future, my vision is to see everybody graduating at 100%. Is it possible? Yes, it is possible out there. That would be my vision as far as having the best district in state of Illinois. Thank you.
So my vision for education in this district is to improve our academic achievement levels. They are low. I even think that the state's report card, those levels are low as well. I want to see this district go way beyond the state level. So to, you know, I want to see that this is a community and school districts are, this school district is a school district of choice for our, for parents and employers are looking for, you know, to recruit, that our school district is where these employers are going to actually go first to seek out talent. I'd like to see that we continue our focus on the career, the career education of vocational training so that we can meet the, as a manufacturing community, that we meet the needs of our employers here. But also, we, you know, we have students who are, who have higher aspirations and who want to get four-year degrees or two-year degrees. So, you know, I definitely support that. So I want to see us as a district who are, who actually caters to the needs of our students and also, you know, meet the needs of our parents as well. So we have that career, college focus, but also that vocational focus so that we have well-rounded students. I think I answered, was it?
Thank you.
Okay, so that's it.
So that's a big question. That's a huge question. So many things that you could interpret that. My vision for education would be to have students graduating that are ready to be productive citizens in our community in many ways, not only academically, but socially, emotionally, connections to each other, being a good neighbor. And there are a lot of ways that we do that. Of course, we need to increase achievement. That's our number one goal. But there are also many things in our schools that keep our kids engaged that I'm a strong supporter of all the athletics and extracurricular activities that we have, opportunities for our students to be involved outside of school. A large majority of our kids that are at risk to not graduate are kept in school by athletics and extracurriculars. And I think that that's really important focus for them. It's what keeps them coming to school every day. And that's, that's where we need them. They can't learn if they're not in school. So I also support all of those extracurricular activities that those students are there for.
Thank you. My vision for education is, first of all, that all students in the district have equal opportunities, recognizing that not all students are coming from the same, starting at the same place. So different students need different help to get to the same finish line. So that's one issue. The other issue is parental involvement in the schools, making sure that parents can get involved in their schools, in their kids' education, making sure that parents know how to access resources that are available. There's a fair amount of resources available for kids that need help, but a lot of times parents don't know how to, how to engage and achieve or get those services. And that's, that's something that's kind of close to me. My son has, had, needed some help also and, like I said, I'm a lawyer, so I've kind of dealt with bureaucracies and stuff like that and rules and stuff. And even me and my kid's mom is also lawyers, we're all dealing with rules all the time, but we're like struggling to get work through the bureaucracy of getting certain help for them. And so what I would like to see is advocates, more parental, parent advocates for getting kids the help that they need. So parental involvement, teacher respect and listening to teachers, like I mentioned before. So parental involvement, teacher respect. I think adding those together equals empowering students and I think that's what we're looking for, that's what my vision of education is for the Rockford Public School District. Thank you.
I would like to see enough attainment, we keep talking about achievement, that when people look to come to Rockford for a job at a hospital or at a manufacturing or anywhere else, that they are drawn by our schools and what we have to offer and how well our students are doing in those schools. There is, you know, part of this is having a community that is also has attained higher levels of education to support our students. I don't know if any of you know, I had somebody who was very involved trying to bring Trader Joe's here and Trader Joe's wouldn't come because we don't have a 33% college graduation rate among our community members. So I think drawing in higher levels of education through job opportunities is important, but then we need to trickle that into our schools and have them working with our students. So I think we've lost that community engagement. So my vision also includes having that connection with the community that we have lost. We've brought in some community partners now, we need to do more of that. We've been fortunate because we have our Bessers funds from COVID, that's allowed us to do these partnerships. We have 25 of them. What's going to happen when that money is gone? How are we going to bring students in? My vision is that it would be a first choice for families. Everybody needs to do what's best for their child. I totally understand when an education is important to happen in, for example, a religious school. school. But outside of that, I really think that the more we can offer in terms of extra programming, cultural sensitivity, behavioral supports, helping parents, you know, we have parents who go to our GED program at Roosevelt because they want to be literate and be able to help their students with their homework. I don't even know that, that everybody's even aware that, that we have that opportunity. But we do need alternatives for, because not all children learn the same. We can't send all of our high schoolers to a school with 2,000 students and expect them to achieve. And I agree that what I'd like to see is when students graduate, they are either ready for college or they have some sort of career readiness. And that would include, to me, the soft skills of how you dress and how you act in an interview. Mr. Reyes, I agree with you on that one. Thank you.
So I previously traveled to Asheville, North Carolina to visit a school district that if anybody has the time to look it up, it's, it's really truly amazing. So they have a model where they bring in lots of community supports and they meet a student's needs in every way possible, whether that is personal hygiene issues, whether that is supports within the community, whether that's a teacher. They have what's called homework diners. And so they have teachers come and they, after hours, and there's a meal that's sponsored. Teachers sit down with students and families and teach parents the skills that are needed to help their student with homework. So not only is it a resource for the parent, but it is also for the students. I think that in our community, there's an extreme lack of trust that our parents and caregivers have with the district. And so I think a vision for this community would be building trust and having it that people want to come to the buildings and know how to get into the buildings. I don't know if people have pulled up on some schools and you don't really sure how even to access it. So I think supporting the whole child, which means their family, meeting them where they are. So if a community resource can't come to the school, let's make, make sure we have a way to get that child to what they need. Setting them up for successful lives does include achievement, absolutely. But if you don't have your other needs met, we know how Maslow's hierarchy of needs work. And so having children feel safe, having children be listened to and heard, addressing their trauma, making sure that their hearts are healed, making sure that we have buildings where they feel they belong, that they come because there's one person, whoever that person is, that cares about them and know that they matter. They call when they don't show up and wonder where they are and how they can support them the very next day. Reaching our full potential does not necessarily mean reading and math, those things are lovely, and I hope that children can have those skills too. But being successful, people in our community are, are lots of different ways. So interacting with our peers, interacting with authority, listening to rules that maybe we don't like to follow. There's so many different ways that we can have a more collective and collaborative community by teaching these different skills to our students. Recent business owners have cited no soft skills. So children are leaving RPS with no soft skills and not being able to function. That is such a disservice that children are going through 12 years of school and then having nothing to be able to show for it. So my vision is having the best public education we have, utilizing the amazing staff that we have in the building, utilizing students. So asking them, how can we make this better for you? And making sure that they reach their highest level regardless if that's college or whatever it is that they, that they intend to do, because this is their lives and their decisions to make.
I'll be real quick, because it's 7:04. So I think for me, you know, and, you know, we're here with Pastor Copeland, so we can dream a little bit. You know, for me, the vision, we talk real serious and, and I think that's important, workforce development and attainment versus achievement. And I think of going into Ellis and seeing these, these, you know, little people. And I think I want to, you know, my vision is that we can provide an equitable landscape. So in each building, teachers are empowered enough, administrators are retained enough, all this stuff, so these little people can dream a little bit. And, and I think that's important. They can try, they don't have to determine they're a welder when they're in fifth grade, you know what I mean? They can just have, have some dreams and, and mess around and, you know, think about being a shortstop or think about being a scientist. You know, my daughter, she's a, she wants to be a veterinarian and an astronaut at the same time. And, and I think, you know, her schools have provided her the space to, to be a little silly with the way her ambitions are. And I, and I want to provide that for every student in RPS 205.
My vision for RPS 205 is to have teachers and administration, administrators that reflect our community. The population of our school district is represented by most African-American and Hispanics. But our teachers and administrators are not reflecting what our community look like. It is absolutely imperative that we put forth a greater effort to make that happen. My vision is to see the teachers be able to teach in the most effective way that they know to teach that can reach our students. My vision for RPS 205 is that our administration would be transparent with the issues and executing what is identified to correct the issues. It is my vision for RPS 205 that the parents that are not strong in literacy, that the, that the school district will partner with Rockford Literacy, the Literacy Council, and make that available for them. My vision for RPS 205 is that students that have to, that live a mile and a half, that that mileage would be decreased to a half mile. We have small children that are riding the city bus to get to school. So that is a safety issue. It is my vision that we continue to make sure that our schools are safe. It is my vision that this community will lock arms with one another for the greater good of our student. It is my vision that representative for Subdistrict A will be concerned about what's going on in every single sub-district, as well as those sub-district representatives being concerned about what is going on in Subdistrict A. Too often, if it does not affect our sub-district, we are not engaged. But if we're going to be effective and see change in our school district, we have got to work together in every area of our community. Thank you.
So let's give all of our candidates a hand. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your discipline. Just a couple of, just a couple of more things before we bring back Ms. Cooper, and that is, please remember that you don't have to wait till April the 4th. April the 4th is voting day, but early voting is already started. So if you haven't already done so, please either make plans to early vote or make plans to vote, because this election matters. We do have some final information and instructions.
Thank you all for attending. On behalf of Transform Rockford, there really isn't a good place to stand and not block anyone, so I'll be here. On behalf of Transform Rockford, thank you again for everyone who made this evening possible. The candidates, every single one of them has a passion for our community, our students and our schools, and that is just amazing. Reverend Dr. Copeland for all his help tonight, the Rockford Public Library, the Ushers and our community members. This event was videoed. Our goal is to get it up on the Transform Rockford website so that you can take a look at it at your leisure or share it with your friends or review it and see how you did. You know, you may want to check that out. And also, thank you all for the questions. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get to all of them. But I do know in the back of the packet, there's some meet and greets that are coming up that some of these candidates may be attending and, and maybe you can touch base with them there and see what their thoughts are on those questions. But we do really appreciate all the engagement tonight. So remember, as Reverend Copeland said, voting has already started, but get out there and vote by April 4th so that your voice can be heard. Thank you.